Well, the clock says 2:59, but I've got 3 o'clock on mine, so if everyone could, we'd like to bring the Finance Administration Economic Development Committee to order on Monday, April 17th. It is now 3 o'clock. If everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. If I could ask for someone to approve our agenda today?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Tabernick. Someone to second that?
I'll second it.
Thank you. And any discussion?
Are we going to say happy birthday to Larry?
Well, you're way ahead of me, so go ahead, Ms. Tabernick.
Well, Hayes was going to sing happy birthday to Mr. McKellen.
You only come up there to give my presentation.
Please, spare me.
Well, we know this is probably a big one, like 90, 95, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm telling you, I'm closer to 80 than I am to 70, I'll tell you that.
There you go.
Larry, you're lucky because we had Hayes coming to jump out of a cake for us, so I guess we have to put that off now.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have to leave the room now.
Well, happy birthday, Mr. McKellen.
Yes, happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
So is there any objection to today's agenda?
No.
Seeing no objection, we will, that will be approved, and let's move on and approve the minutes of February 21st, 2023. Do I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Thank you. And is there a second?
I'll second.
Great, thank you. And any discussion? Seeing no discussion, any objection? Seeing no objection, the minutes of February 21st has been approved, and if we can, let's go ahead and move on to citizens' comments. Do we have anyone, Ms. Sarah, who was online or in person that has signed up to speak today?
No, sir.
All right, great. We will move on then to our agenda items, but before we do that, I think we have an announcement that Ms. Howard would like to make?
Yes, on behalf of my constituents and Mr. Councilman Glover's constituents, we are having a workshop with Ms. Ebony Sanders on the 25th of April, starting at 6 o'clock, where she will explain the 2023 property reassessment, and it will be in this building. So 6 o'clock, anyone is welcome, but it's for our districts, and there'll be more publicity out about that. Thank you.
What date was that?
The 25th, at 6 o'clock.
All right, any other announcements that we have since the floor is open? All right, if not, then let's jump right into our agenda items. And Mr. Williams, I think you were up first for agenda item number seven, Discussion and Presentation of Year-to-Date Financial Statements for Fiscal Year 2023. Mr. Williams, thank you for being here today. We always like to see you, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wallace. Y'all have to forgive me, I'm kind of between years right now. I've got one foot in 2024 and one in 2023, and I hope to keep them straightened out, but it is having, it can be tricky sometimes. But first, I want to kind of go through where we were on the general fund right now, and the first slide that I have is a basic overview of kind of where we are. Right now, we've collected 96% of our ad valorem taxes through the end of March, which you can see, our intergovernmental revenue is still lagging because we haven't gotten the home state exemption. Typically, that comes in May. That's about $2 million that we should be getting. Fines and forfeitures are still lagging a little bit, but we're hoping that they're going to correct by year end. And our interest as income is a little bit higher than, is a lot higher than expected due to interest rates are no longer .0001%, which really helps us out a lot. So it's really jumped over the past year that I've seen. So anyways. And then down here is, I guess the next slide is the detail, the detailed breakdown of the revenues, if you wanted to look into that. Those are there for y'all to look at. Next, we have our expenditures, and if you look overall encumbered in, spending encumbered is about 73.18%. I kind of did the schedule a little bit, not, I did the regular schedule that y'all normally have. We all have the detail of the expenditures, the budget and everything in the variance, but, which is this one right here. But I kind of prepared a different one, and it's a projection. It's really simple math. It was basically what I did is I had the revised budget and kind of where they were to date, and then I calculated, I tried to calculate, like if they were at 65% and they should be at 75%, what an estimated surplus would be, which is that second to the right column, the estimated surplus, and just to kind of see if the surplus or deficit for the different departments would be, just for conversation only, is it reasonable or not. I kind of compared it to their surplus and deficit off the 2022 annual comprehensive financial report. So, you know, these rough numbers, and there's a lot of spending that goes on in the last quarter, so it's really hard to do a true projection without, you know, knowing I'm going to buy this piece of equipment before year end and things like that. But this is just kind of something to just, just think about. And I just thought it was something different. I wanted to show it and just kind of put it out there. That's, that's all that schedule is.
Nice question on that one. Do you mind? Chair?
Nope.
Can I have a question?
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
So if I look, I'm just looking at the big numbers. If I look at public safety, I see the sheriff's office, the 2022 surplus deficit was, surplus was 1.3 million.
Yes, ma'am.
And the detention, 1 million. Is that basically, I'm guessing, personnel that can't staff all day?
A lot of gap positions there.
That's what I thought.
Yes, ma'am. A lot of gap positions. And it's just, you know, this time of year, you just kind of want to scratch your head and see like kind of where we are, where we're going to be. Now, you know, we have a lot of big ticket items that we have coming in, a lot of land purchases at the end of the year that are going to be coming through to the tune of about $7 million. The Cooler Track in Two Mullet Street that y'all have already approved, and they're going to be in there too. So, you know, mitigating a surplus or deficit at this time, that will definitely help mitigate that. Anyways.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Howard.
Under, this is under risk management?
Yes, ma'am.
The surplus seems pretty high.
And we're addressing that in the, in the current year budget. It has to do, so it has to do with prepaid expenses. And when you, so you get an insurance policy, the insurance policy runs from April 1st to March 31st. So for accrual-based accounting, you only get to recognize three months of that in one year, and then nine months in the next year. And I think when the, I didn't, I wasn't, I don't know how the budget, I didn't do the budget personally last year, but it looks like it was overestimated. And so that's one thing that we'll be looking into further this year to make sure that that is, that number's pretty well on.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Other questions?
All right.
And please feel free to stop. Y'all don't have to wait then. If y'all have a question for me, just go ahead and hop on, ask me the question. The next is the capital. And that's the Capital Project Fund and where we are to date on that. And so we spent roughly almost $13.2 million, which is pretty good. We have a lot of projects that we're still trying to get done, but you have a list of all the projects, kind of where we are and what we have spent in encumbered to date. And then the next couple are schedules y'all have not, they're in the financial statements, but they haven't seen before, you haven't seen before. A particular interest is probably the first one, and it's the Debt Service Fund, which is funded by Millage. And last year, we issued, we had 5.6 mills to service debt in the Debt Service Fund. And what the Debt Service Fund is non, it is non-referendum debt. The only referendum debt that we have is for rural and critical lands program. This is, this is just general obligation bond debt that we were servicing right now. And so it kind of breaks down kind of where we are. We still have about $420,000 to pay in principal and interest, but we should have a pretty healthy fund balance at the end of the year, probably $21,000 to $22,000, $22 million, which is where we're going to redeem the bond. We have Jeremy Cook with us today. He's our bond counts from Hazewell Sinclair and Boyd, and that's, that's an agenda. I forgot what agenda item is, but that's an agenda item that will be coming up. But we feel that we can go ahead and finance, redeem this, one of our 2013A bond and save about $850,000 of the life, remaining life of the bond with just fund balance. And as y'all know, I don't know if y'all know or not, but debt service funds, you can't use them to finance capital. You could if you're a school district, but in South Carolina, we're only use, we're only able to use it to pay down principal and interest on debt. That's why I wanted to use up for that. The next is the Debt Service Fund for the purchase of real property or the rural and critical land program, and that was at 5.3 mills last year. There, we don't have as large of a fund balance as we do in the Debt Service Fund, but we still have remaining of $1.4 million left to pay in there. And so, and then. And then the very last slide is one y'all have kind of seen, y'all have seen before, and it's what is remaining of the rural and critical lands referendum that we, we had a $25 million bond that we issued in 2020, I believe. And right now, this is showing all the activity on it. And right now, we have about $14 million left in there. And that's kind of where we are right now at March 31st. Do y'all have any further questions?
Mr. Chairman, actually, good. Just from on education, can you explain the variances on some of those charts that you had?
Which ones?
Just, I mean, just take for an example, the, the Real Property Debt Service Fund. What, can you explain the variances to me, what, just what that means in general?
Well, the, I mean, the variance is basically what, what we have budgeted versus what actually happened. And you got to figure that we're not through the year yet. So anything with property taxes, property taxes will go through, I mean, you have your June 30th cutoff, but then you have a 60-day period that you can bring back in, in those receivables. So we won't have a full number on property taxes really until after August 30th. So that's one thing. But sometimes the estimates that people put in aren't as tight as, sometimes they're off. I mean, it is, it is human error, but we try and get them as close as humanly possible.
So at this point, you're not concerned, like if I'm looking at the same chart, you're, none of these variances really put a red flag up because we're only, we have months to go till the end?
We have months to go, and we're really pushing staff to try and get completed what projects they can get completed. If, you know, we have another things on the agenda, like the ambulance that we're able to go ahead and purchase now out of current year funds instead of waiting till next year. So we're trying to get things that are necessary for the operations and, and that are supported by y'all, trying to get as much done as we can by the end of the year. But it, you know, and then you also have, you also have programs that don't ramp up until, you know, this time of year. So, you know, parks and wrecks are a prime example, mosquito control, you know, you're not really spraying for mosquitoes when it's 32 degrees outside, but you know, this time of year, the no CMs and the mosquitoes will carry away a small baby. So, you know, that's, that's something you can't, you can't really factor into. But, but you know, there are peaks and valleys in the months. Kind of the way that we've done the budget in the past is, is just one big budget number for all 12 months, and it's not really, you could do it monthly, but we, that hasn't been done in the past. So.
I remember from the library budget, for example, certain services didn't come due till April or May. So that money sits there, and it looks like you have a giant surplus, but then when that invoice comes, it's to be paid.
That's correct.
Yeah, so it's by the time of year on some.
Or you have, let's take animal services, for example. So you have the Hilton Head Humane Association that you may have, and I don't know the number off the top of my head. I'm good at numbers, but I'm not that good. Say there's a million dollar contract, but it's, that, that contract's encumbered on July 1st. So it's showing up as spending encumbered on July 1st, where we don't actually pay out that amount, but monthly. So, you know, it's going to take us a full 12 months, but if you look at it, animal services look like they're going to be in the hole. Well, if you look at what they have encumbered, they have, you know, half a million dollars of encumbrances for the next three months that'll, when everything gets, shakes through the sifter, it should equal out.
Any other questions?
So hypothetically, this is your first budget, right, you said?
I've been involved in pieces of it before, but yes, ma'am.
Well, so hypothetically, when we get to the end of June, most of these will be expended, and most, there should not be very many in the deficit range.
Hopefully, there's none in the deficit range. Ideally, ideally, it's good to have, ideally, it'd be zero. That would be the ideal, that you spend every penny that you got at the end of the day. Now, is that practical? I mean, it's better, it's better to have surpluses than deficits. If you're going to have a deficit, it's better to have a small deficits than a several million dollar deficit. But then again, when you look at deficits too, you know, we always talk about buying something with fund balance. So there's not a checking account called fund balance that I can just write a check out of. At the end of the day, to, to use up that fund balance, you may have to have a deficit within the general fund to suck up some of that fund balance to get it where it needs to go. We've transferred out, I think roughly about $22 million right now already in, into the Capital Project Funds, so we can have multiple years to get these projects done instead of trying to get every, dawned, you know, from, from cradle to grave in a year. It's just proven time and time again not to be something that we can get done. I mean, almost anything needs to be done in at least a year if it's a capital project. And so that, we moved a lot of that, but, yeah. Did I answer your question? I think I went off on a tangent. I'm sorry.
Well, the other thing is, in almost every department, as we just noted before, personnel costs or personnel, there's always a gap. You're never 100, well, rarely 100% staffed for 12 months of the year. So there's always going to be money.
So what we've done a little bit different in this budget year than we have in other budget years is Whitney, Denise, and I, and mainly Whitney and Denise have really been going through the departmental budgets. So while they were doing that, I was trying to write these, these financial statements for you. But they've been really beating them up fairly well, I would say, and it's a really good number. So what we tried to do this year was instead of putting, you know, all of John's surplus into the detention center, what we tried to do is pull it out, and we kind of have a payroll contingency fund. So if their numbers start looking really wampy, then we can, we have money that we can put in there. Ideally, I would love for all the EMS people, all the detention people, all the sheriffs to be, I like to be fully staffed, but it's just a battle we can't fight. We can't win. But we keep fighting, so it's a good thing.
Got it, thank you.
Good. Any other questions? I have two for you. One is the actual accounting definition of wampy.
Wampy?
I'm just kidding.
It's much similar to boondoggle?
Um, yeah. And obviously, we have some new council people, and it's always good for people online and people that are watching this. Tell us real quick and explain the, the millage-based compensation, who that is for us that we fund, that comes from millage base, and whether it's USCB, TCL, hospital, but if you can just give us.
You almost, you're halfway through the list, just keep going.
But go ahead, just kind of explain that and how that works.
In prior councils, they set a millage to do specific things. One's for higher education, and they get roughly $2.5 million a year, and that's $2.5 million to USCB and $2.5 million to TCL. There's an indigent care, and that's to Beaufort Comp Health and Beaufort Memorial Health, and that's typically been 900 to a million dollars a year. You know, I don't have the numbers on, this is, I'm close, but I'm not exact. And then you have Economic Development, which has a mill for the job and work site fund that we typically, that John O'Toole spends, you know, he has his incentives, and he spends out of there. Those are the five that are mill-based. There are others that we have historically given money to that are kind of on the books, and you kind of know that they're going to be there. That's, I have kind of a more detailed breakdown, but it's not by mill. I got to look at this schedule. It's broken down a little bit better in the budget presentation that I'll give you in 15, 20 minutes.
Oh, okay.
It should help.
So, yeah, just, just so everyone understands, there's a millage set for those funding requests, and as the value of the mill goes up, their, their budget automatically goes.
Correct. So as the, as the assessed value of properties go up in Beaufort County, that, that, that particular entity is not stuck at a stagnant number. It's not like you're saying, I will give $150,000 to Hayes for the next 10 years and had to come back and say, no, I want 175. That number should be moving as assessed values move up.
Okay.
So they should be getting more.
All right, any questions on that? Nope.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Williams, thank you. We're going to see a lot more of you later today, so appreciate that. And so let's jump on to our budget funding request presentations, and I think Mr. Baxley is on his way. He has asked if he could be moved back, because again, he should be here shortly. So Mr. O'Toole, if you are prepared, would jump to you first, that way you can get out of here sooner. But we've got Mr. John O'Toole from the Beaufort County Economic Development Corporation, and Mr. O'Toole, it's always good to see you, so thank you for coming to see us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, council members. Good to be with you today. I, I'll try to limit my comments to about five minutes and be happy to take questions. The Economic Development Court. Am I going to be advancing this?
You will be able to.
Okay, good deal. I apologize for any of the transitions ahead of time. But our, our focus is to diversify the economy, foster investment, brand less growth, and transform lives. And as I begin our comments today, I'll just say that we look back, I'm not doing very well, Sarah, so.
Try it.
I'm in business, thank you. And what I'm particularly proud of as we look at the, the numbers we've put up over the last five and a half years is that we've done that without alienating, being at odds with any residents. We placed some 60, 60 projects and in sync with people who have environmental concerns. So I'm kind of proud of the work that we've done in terms of, I'm sorry, I'm just getting used to this. Hayes has, and his staff has shown you this before, I want you to look at what we do as an investment, and if we're not hitting the mark and getting done what you would like, just let us know. But over the last five years, between operations and the Site and Jobs Fund, you put over $5 million into economic development. We keep track when we tell you about economic development. When I put this presentation together, we were at $320 million. We have, since last month, gone up another $7 million. So pretty good. In terms of the jobs either retained or created in the county, over 1,450 jobs, and if you jump down to the bottom, we've been averaging about $47,000 per job. So we think that improves lives. In terms of what you see in the middle there is getting South Carolina tax dollars back into the county between different incentives we've provided to companies, some $15 million. Most of that made up by the Department of Commerce. And then you can see the square footage absorbed. So this is a snapshot of what I hope, I saw the presentations last month, I think you're looking for, you know, what are the results of what you've invested. And so they've been good. I think what's worth noting is that in this time, we were interrupted by COVID. We had great momentum going into COVID, and when I spoke to my board in January, we were at like 7% of goal. And you can see, we had a goal this year of $70 million. And now all of a sudden, since January, this is what we see happening in the next, next four to six months, these projects. And I gave them a little rating on the left in terms of the likelihood of the project going forward, but safely, we have $150 million that are going to hit in the next four to six months. And then when you get to the bottom, we have some projects that have been out there. Cloud, I've been, we've been working on for five and a half years. Crab is a 100,000 square foot facility that would raise soft shell crabs going into the Commerce Park. We just want to see what, how they get through the permitting process with DHEC and also with maintaining the integrity of Beaufort Jasper Water and Sewers facilities if they were to locate there. And then we have another, the last one is one we're competing with Ohio, Georgia, and Texas on, and that's a Israeli passenger drone company. So a lot going on there. In our, in our packet, and I'm at 4 minutes and 9 seconds, we have, we're requesting level funding, and as Hayes just mentioned, we, we get 3/10 of a mill. So if it stays at that level, we recognize that that's an increase, so we appreciate that. And there's also mention of putting money aside in our submission for, for product development, $10 million. As you look at this Commerce Park, all those buildings are spoken for, those yellow blocks, and two of them are actually under, under a letter of intent to develop. So a lot going on there. Our landing pad down on Cartaret Street is getting a lot of attention. We have a Japanese, a Vietnamese, and we should have a South African company or two locating there shortly. So that's drawing a lot of attention. Our focus, I'm at 5 minutes and 9 seconds, remains the same, to work on workforce, marketing our county, site development. We've been working steadily with Hank and Eric and the staff here on building that out. Business retentions is as important as recruiting somebody and then making sure that we have ample amount of community engagement so that we're not out of step with what people want Beaufort County to be. And I apologize, at 5:37, I'm done.
We didn't mean to make you rush, but you did a very good job.
No, no, I was here last time. So out of respect for the MAC, which I have a lot of respect for in the chamber, I didn't want to drone on.
Any, any questions for Mr. O'Toole?
I thought he was going to get 10 minutes.
Well, he's supposed to have 10 minutes, but he is self-regulated.
Yeah.
I didn't get the memo.
That's why he kept saying 4 minutes and 9, 5 minutes and 9.
Yeah. No, I got the point across, I hope. I hope when you look at what you spend, you think of it as an investment that's yielding, is yielding a proper amount for the county. And I do think with everything going on, and the chairman, council chairman talks about live, work, and play, people do want those jobs, but we have to do it in a way that doesn't disrupt what we all love about Beaufort County. I think we've been kind of chipping away at that and making some progress, and I think there's more to come.
And you do a great job. Let me ask a question then. So obviously, you said level funding, that you're looking for level funding, but then you mentioned a $10 million. What was that $10 million?
Product development.
Yeah, I would think it's, I would call it a bogey right now, because a lot of conversation has to occur. I'm not asking for you to give me $10 million. I would suggest that the county earmark that, as you're doing with some of the other funds, if possible, or we build it over time. When I last spoke before council, the chairman and the vice chairman, York's been after me, Gerald's been after me over time to make sure, well, when are we going to develop more product? We have been working on LaBico, that came up last time I presented here. There's, Commerce is already interested in a 850-acre site up on the north side of Beaufort County in Yamasee that could be in play. We've had conversations about some property south of the Whale Branch, but making sure that we have, one of my board members says, why market if you don't have something to sell? So we, as you, as you go back and look at how quick this Commerce Park is filling in, and I think we learned a lot about having the proper infrastructure in a Commerce Park, how to, how to market a Commerce Park in Beaufort County. And so I foresee this, I think I've told this council. And so I I foresee this, uh, I think I've told this council before, in three to five years, this will be fully subscribed. So, uh, if you want to have that diverse economy, you have defense, which is critically important. You have hospitality and tourism, blue chip, uh, blue chips, uh, blue chip portfolio. But it's like having a two-legged stool, so we're continuing to build out a diverse economy. This is gonna fill in pretty quick, and we we're gonna need additional sites to develop. Uh, just to give you an idea, and and so I I showed you, uh, the projects that were, uh, likely to hit. But, uh, next week, we have a, uh, a munitions manufacturer, uh, that would spend about forty-four million dollars, create a hundred and fifteen jobs. Uh, tomorrow, I have a call with Commerce on a, a one point five billion dollar, uh, chip plant. Now I'm starting to sound like Willie Loman, uh, telling you about these great sales down the road. But we'll continue to garner attention. I don't know if these projects are right or will fit in Beaufort, uh, but we're getting a lot of interest.
Good, any more questions?
I just wanna comment, um, that, you know, I appreciate Mr. Toole, uh, since he's been here and the kind of work he's done and bringing in the kind of, um, industries that, uh, compatible to, uh, Beaufort. So I just wanna say I appreciate that, and, uh, I will continue to support you as you continue to plan for the future. And I think that's what you're saying, we need to make sure that we're planning for the future and not wait until it gets here. But we have to plan for it, so the future's coming, we just gotta plan for it.
Yeah, and that's a good point. Uh, years ago, twenty years ago, I came to an economic development conference in South Carolina, Charleston. Never envisioned I would have the, uh, great, great pleasure of living here. Uh, but the folks who spoke at the conference were from Research Triangle Park in, yeah, outside of Raleigh, uh, or including Raleigh. And and they said it was an overnight success over fifty years, you know? The work was done. It's like farming. If you don't turn the soil and plant the seed, you're not gonna have something nine nine months down the road. These projects do take a while. This one in particular, uh, was out there floundering for fifteen or twenty years. Uh, the infrastructure's in place, uh, the, uh, value proposition. I I think in the past, we used to hunt for elephant. And I think deer and rabbit are really a better fit for Beaufort County, smaller to midsize, uh, projects and companies. And so I I think we kind of know our niche, and, uh, Commerce is working well with us to, uh, bring us leads as well as the things that we're able to do with your funding. I should say that, you know, it's always pointed out here, uh, that the county is our largest funder, and you are, and we're really grateful for it. We have gone to the towns, uh, it'll sound like a nominal increase, but for a fifteen thousand dollar increase and, uh, which is a sixty percent increase. And they said, you're asking for sixty percent? I said, no, we're asking for fifteen. I believe the county wants to see that the towns are invested in this as well. And, uh, we'll we'll continue to try to leverage your investments with the money we're hopefully gonna raise with the request of the towns. We'll start to build out a, uh, a private, uh, funding of economic development to, uh, leverage and augment what you provide for us.
Great, Mr. Toole, we appreciate your cooperation, and you do a great job. We appreciate that and everything that that you've done. And sometimes I think you don't get the the accolades you should. But again, thank you for everything you do. We do appreciate that. So again, thank you for being here today.
I know you think you're done with me. One more thing, I I can't take that.
You have five minutes or?
No, I have to, I have to, I, Charlie Stone is off today, but he deserves, uh, a great deal of credit for our success. So it's, uh, and a lot of people, uh, pitch in. We've got kind of a, a real, we have so many teammates in economic development, it's not just Charlie and I. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Toole. Great, uh, let's move on then. And, um, next up, we have, um, uh, the Military Enhancement Committee of Beaufort County, um, Mr. Ian Scott, uh, and also Chairman, um, Neil Puglecy.
That's correct.
Close enough, okay, great. All right, good.
That's close enough.
I'll just call you Neil, that makes sense.
That's good by me. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for allowing us to chat with you here today. We're gonna talk a little bit about the Military Enhancement Committee. Of course, I'm the chairman of that, very, very proud to be the chairman chairman of that. Uh, just a little bit of, uh, background, um, thirty-four-year retired Marine. Uh, in my career, I was stationed at Paris Island three times, nineteen ninety-one, two thousand and four, and then two thousand and fourteen, uh, until I retired in two thousand and sixteen and then decided, uh, after the third time, to make Beaufort County my home. And I'm very, very proud to, uh, to be, uh, here in here in South Carolina. So we've got a lot of history with Beaufort County. I've seen Beaufort County since nineteen ninety-one, a fantastic place to be. What's our mission? You can you can read the mission up there, but basically, we make sure that folks know the importance of our military installation, our Tri Command, uh, here. And then we also, uh, try to, uh, really kind of advocate for the military to people who don't understand the military or who have not been, uh, surrounded by it. So that's what we do, and I think we do a fairly, a fairly good job at at that, uh, mission. Our structure, public-private, we are a committee of the chamber. We do have eleven voting members. Uh, you are getting ready to renominate two members, uh, to the MECC, I think, this afternoon, so thank you very much. And then the others up there. Now, the new entrance to the military-based, or to the, uh, Military Enhancement Committee, of course, is gonna be the town of Bluffton and the town of Hilton Head. And we're pending their nominees to the Military Enhancement Committees. We're very, very happy about that. What are the reasons? The reasons are quite simple, national defense. If we take a look at the recruits that are that are produced out of Paris Island, uh, absolutely phenomenal, uh, training, uh, their preparation for service, uh, to our to our country. Of course, we've got the F-35, and the F-35, of course, has got multinational, uh, interest in there and that they come from many, many different countries to get trained right here in Beaufort, South Carolina. A history and culture for the cradle of the Corps, cradle of the Corps for the Marine Corps. Economic impact, as you can see, two point five billion in economic impact. And of course, you see the, uh, ten thousand service members, you see the nineteen thousand jobs. But there's also another impact here as well. And that is to the twenty-six thousand veterans that we know of in Beaufort County. Now, those are just twenty-six thousand beneficiaries of the Veterans Administration. There are others who are not beneficiaries who reside here in, uh, in Beaufort County. And that represents a rather significant, a rather significant, uh, cut of the total population. For those who are interested, we've got a website, we've got a blog. We also have, post on our our website, the economic impact, that goes all the way, uh, up until July of twenty twenty-two. The other thing, too, is that we put together responses from wherever they may come from, whether it's the Marine Corps Times, whether it's the, uh, any of the national newspapers, any of the local ones. And we talk about the value particularly of the Tri Command. And this comes up especially when folks start talking about, hey, why don't we do this? Why don't we move recruit training to somewhere else? Or why don't we move training somewhere else? Or why don't we cut back on the services or the offerings that we've got here in the in the, uh, in the, uh, Low Country? So we're very, very, I think, uh, aggressive in responding to those as rapidly as possible. What's our value? The MECC is a trusted liaison to the Tri Command. We have personal relationships with the commanding general, commanding, uh, of Paris Island, the commanding officer of the Naval Hospital, and also the commanding officer of the Marine Corps Air Station. Incidentally, Colonel Arbogast and myself served together back in two thousand, two thousand and three. And so we have a very, very close relationship. We're very, very, uh, clo, uh, tight, tight community. And what else do we do? We track and analyze policy documents. So for instance, when the National Defense Authorization Act comes out, we will get a cut of that. We'll look at that and we'll determine, hey, what is in the best interests? You know, the things that we are, um, interested in. And we'll provide the feedback to our federal elected officials or other officials as as it's necessary. Most recently, we did an analysis on the CBO report. The CBO report did a did an analysis saying, we can cut back on DOD and Department of Veterans Affairs by these multiple points. That would have a significant impact upon Beaufort County, rather significant. We also coordinate between the installations and government. So for instance, we advocated for, we worked with county staff in order to secure the funding for the three point eight billion dollar pathway between Marine Corps Air Station and Laurel Bay. I personally briefed that to the executive committee at the, um, Military Base Task Force. And we were successful in securing those resources in support of the air station and Laurel Bay. We advocate for covering gaps for medical services between the military and the hospital. And Russell Paxton was very instrumental in helping out the military with a with a gap in services that they that they had. Very, very, but we were, uh, very happy to participate in that. Lieutenant Colonel Therman, I think she's in the back there somewhere, our newly selected Veterans Affairs Officer, uh, for for the county. She and I are advisors, have been assigned as advisors to the Department of Veterans Affairs, U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs, when they construct the new Veterans Administration Facility Clinic here in Beaufort. So once that gets put in here, Caroline and myself will be brought on, and we will advise the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs on the scope of that facility. We also provide advice to our elected leaders, whether it's at the federal level or the local letter, uh, level, on all things related to related to, uh, the military. And then, of course, the state's support and coordination. Uh, I am appointed to the, uh, the Military Base Task Force, the Governor's Military Base Task Force, on the executive committee. So we have that strong representation from Beaufort up in, uh, up in Columbia. We also played a part in spousal, uh, professional certification and enrolling military students in Beaufort County School District before military folks had actual orders to come to, uh, the area. And oftentimes, military kids, they kind of are are at a disadvantage because a military member may not get his his orders to move from station to station until after registration for school has already been completed. But we were able to work with our friends at the state in order to modify that policy. And the last thing that we were very happy to work on on this year was the whole vaccination thing. There was a time when DHEC did not accept vaccination records for military kids into the local school system. We were able to work with the state in order to create the policies, the procedures to, uh, to get around that. So the value that we bring, uh, to the to the area, to the county, I think is pretty significant. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Ian Scott, who's gonna talk a little bit about the Naval Hospital redevelopment.
Thank you, Neil, and thank you all for the opportunity to 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 brief. Uh, Neil just gave you kind of a big picture overview of what the MECC has been doing since its inception in two thousand and three. I know there's some council members, particularly Councilmember Howard, with a lot of experience about the MECC. Uh, one of the new projects, uh, that we were able to launch this year with support from the county and frankly, not possible without the the support of the county, is a task force focused, chartered by the MECC, focused on the future of the Naval Hospital Facility. Uh, and and this is us kind of reading the tea leaves. Uh, our impetus, uh, was the announcement of construction of a new ambulatory care clinic at the air station. That was last April. Uh, the VA, as, uh, Neil mentioned already, has announced they are planning to build a new purpose-built, right-sized, modern standalone facility, uh, in Beaufort County. Uh, and then, uh, at a meeting where I know Councilmember Howard and Administrator Greenway were were there with me as well, uh, the outgoing CO of the Naval Hospital concerned, confirmed some of our suspicions about what the likely outcome, uh, for the Naval Hospital over the next decade would be. A brand-new, purpose-built replacement facilities will offload the bulk of the mission that's currently executed at Naval Hospital Beaufort into new facilities. That gives us an opportunity, uh, for substantial redevelopment of that site. Uh, and if we begin now, as we were able to do thanks to the county's support, uh, with some other funding from the state, uh, the city of Beaufort and the town of Port Royal, um, we believe we can have a lot of influence on the outcome, uh, of what happens at the hundred and fourteen acres that comprise the installation Naval Hospital Beaufort. Uh, so we, uh, put together a task force, uh, chartered by the MECC with appointees from the city, the town, the county, uh, the MECC and the chamber. So there are five members on that task force. There's some, uh, ex-officios as well, including Mr. O'Toole, uh, to make sure we're fully integrated with county economic development, uh, as we move forward in that effort. You see the mission, the most important words in that are community-driven, military-supported. We have to be echoing what the community would like to see happen in a way that augments the military mission. Uh, it's our firm belief we can be, over the next decade, uh, have an equal or greater military impact and footprint in this community at two installations, uh, as opposed to three, uh, and will be a net benefit for the county, actually also creates some new jobs, new economic opportunity and new investments. Uh, we needed some help to get there, uh, and Matrix Design Group has been that help. They are a military-specific planning and engineering firm. Uh, the MECC has worked with Matrix previously on a communications plan to get all of our talking points, particularly about resiliency, uh, and the the resiliency issues related to Paris Island. On track, uh, we contracted Matrix to help us. Uh, they've led four successful, um, repositioning projects. We're effectively trying to do what happens in a BRAC outside of a BRAC, knowing that there is unlikely to be another BRAC round anytime in the foreseeable future. We have a base that's ripe for realignment. There are federal authorities that have been granted to the DOD. Uh, we believe the Navy can leverage those and has an interest in leveraging those. We're trying to be a Pathfinder project for the Navy for how they might leverage their asset to generate new funds that'll stay local over a long period of time to support investments in resiliency and installations, uh, and mission support activities at our other two installations here in the community, uh, by leveraging the asset that the Navy currently owns, which is the land, uh, at the Naval Hospital site. Uh, so, uh, to date, we've convened in September, uh, held our first public meeting at the town of Port Royal, actually convened in the council chambers in September, uh, our first meeting in Pu, in Port Royal, public meeting in Port Royal in November. Uh, we've been meeting bi-weekly since then. This group has been very aggressive in its time schedule. Uh, we just wrapped up in the last month, meetings with the CO in our offices and a comprehensive site tour, top to bottom, basement to ceiling, and the entire perimeter of the installation, surveying and testing all of our assumptions about what could happen there. We have preliminary site plans. Uh, we'll be looking forward to meetings with, um, members of council over the coming weeks, uh, to review some of those. Our ultimate goal is to bring a a proposal to the Navy for what they might do in several phases, uh, as we, the expected drawdown at of, uh, of activities in Naval Hospital Beaufort happens over the coming years. Show them an opportunity to generate some revenue, support new jobs, new investment, and new tax base, uh, in Beaufort County in a way that augments the existing military that we have. Uh, that is the big, uh, the big goal. Uh, we're on track to bring a proposal to the Navy in, uh, June. Uh, that was our original stated goal, and we're we're on it. Uh, we do believe we will have additional engineering needs. Uh, this is not, this is gonna get us to the end of phase one, not to the end of the project. We still have to encourage activity by the Navy. Essentially, we have to get them to put out an RFP, uh, assuming they do and be believe that's in their best interest. We believe there'll be some additional support we will need to provide to get that project across the finish line. Uh, and that is the reason we are asking, uh, for renewed funding at a level, uh, status from last year. And I think that's it. I know that's my time. So we'll entertain any questions.
Any questions, uh, we have, uh, for Mr. Scott and?
Mr. Chairman, I do, I I know you came and talked to my rotary about this this project with the Naval Hospital. Uh, when you came to talk to us, it was kind of wide open. Have y'all started to narrow that down? And so can you share some of your ideas with us?
We are narrowing it down. I'd love to do some, uh, input gathering on a small group basis with members of council if we could. Just to make sure we're we're on track before we go public, uh, with any of the things that might happen there. But punchline, we are looking at a a mixed-use redevelopment that would include some housing. Uh, we're looking to have something that will be an economic catalyst, a piece of that site, uh, that will give. site that will give product for Mr. O'Toole and economic development leaders across our region to go promote. And then, we envision an adaptive reuse that's complementary to the region with the existing Naval Hospital Facility. It's an incredible structure that's incredibly well-maintained and has a lot of architectural merit. We believe there's an adaptive reuse that could be, could be, could sell well.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Howard, go ahead.
First, I'd like to thank getting the pathway done to Laurel Bay. That is wonderful news, and so glad it worked out. And also, would like to say I'm excited about what's happened so far, and I hope our whole county council can continue to support what you're doing with the Naval Hospital Task Force. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Taber, go ahead.
Mine's not a question, it's a comment. I read the report, it was very succinct, very informative. I noticed here it says in the fiscal year, the MECC's funding from Beaufort County was matched at an 80% rate by grants from the state and from local municipalities, because you were talking here about what happens if we deny your request. So I found it, you know, good that 80%, you had a match rate there, and you have some private sector support as well.
Truly, the MECC was founded in, I believe, 2003. It has legs that are longer than that, but it was founded as a public-private partnership. I see the Chamber as a steward of that partnership. It was housed at the Chamber at its inception. It's certainly integrated into our mission and is integral to the support that we try to bring to all local businesses. For us, that's in northern Beaufort County. I think this, the military is a county-wide economic asset. It's a significant portion of our county-wide GDP can be tied directly to the employment and activities that happen at the air station at Paris Island, at Naval Hospital Beaufort, and is a big part of the culture of our community, the patriotism that this community has, and I think why people like to be here. So yes, we were really happy for this to be a public-private effort in this Naval Hospital project going forward. We did enjoy some support from the state, significant support from the state and from municipal governments. But again, the first dollars in were from Beaufort County, and we wanted to recognize and thank you guys for that support. That allowed us to move forward confidently. We were, the Chamber actually put the first dollars in prior to the last budget year so we could get started early. We only had that confidence because of the leadership from county council, county administrator. Mr. Glover.
Yes, um, let me, let me, uh, there's no question that the military base is vital to this, to this area, and would love to afford to be here hundreds of years from now. And I think that's the mission of you, of the MECC as well. Several years ago, before Senator Thurman died, he got funding for barracks on Paris Island, which gave me the assurance that if he's funding that, he's investing in Paris Island, it's going to be here for a while. Do you foresee any future investment, particularly as it relates to storm sea level rising and the concern with Paris Island in particular, dealing with the sea level rising?
Yes, sir. As, as some of you know, I'm involved in stormwater infrastructure within, within northern Beaufort County. And so, and I've also had, like I said, three tours on Paris Island. I ended up as the Director of Operations for Paris Island in 2016, so I have a very, very good understanding. Harris Island is very well set right now to weather the impacts of sea level rise, climate change, very, very well set. The things that they've done aboard Paris Island right now will truly make that, that location viable for the next 100 years. So I'm not worried about sea level rise and Paris Island. Now, that said, I was on the other side of the BRAC in 2005, so I collected the data for the BRAC, for the Marine Corps and Department of Defense analyzing whether or not this would be a good location. And so I have a very, very acute understanding of all the triggers that would, that would make this an attractive, attractive target. I can tell you right now that the trajectory that the county is on and the community is on does not make this an attractive target for a BRAC opportunity right now.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Greenway, you want to just say something?
Can you all walk us through the makeup of the expansion of the MECC, include Bluffton and Hilton Head? Who's going to do those appointments? And did I see something on there about the Greater Island Council playing a role? They're not really an authorized body, so why are they getting two votes on the committee?
Good questions. The Greater Island Council, the MECC expanded prior to either of our tenures to include, with the goal of including countywide representation. It added two appointees from the Greater Island Council. That is a, by longstanding, or at least, I think it's the past decade, they've had those appointments. The current members from there are retired Army Colonel John Cully and, and, oh, yeah, Carlton Dallas. Those are the two members. We would like to have genuine countywide engagement in the military issues in this community. We think that would be an asset for the whole county, to have a full understanding and have a seat at the table. We understand that the towns of Hilton Head Island and Bluffton are interested in those. The way the charter has been drafted, and the, there is a copy of our charter in the packet of materials that went around, and have an extra copy for staff, which includes those appointments. They would be for the mayors of those respective towns.
Okay. So what's the funding level for them to be able to participate in the MECC?
We're not asking them to commit funding to be a part of the MECC at the front. We would just like to have them at the table, engaged, involved, and understanding the issues that the MECC works on with our state and federal delegation. I think a whole countywide approach would make, give us a stronger position in response to anything coming out of Washington or something.
So what's the safeguard against Bluffton and Towne Hilton Head Island from dominating the MECC and taking over most of the projects in the county like the Towne Hilton Head is prone to do?
I'm not sure I have that safeguard in place at the moment. I'd be delighted to talk with you and work with you if we need to structure something alternative.
All right.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Have a great day.
Clusely, thank you for coming. Mr. Scott, always great to see you.
Thank you.
And Lieutenant Colonel Furman, thank you for coming as well. We appreciate you being here. And just so you know, I've asked them to turn the heat up so that way we get done sooner. If anyone's hot, I'm just, that's a joke, I'm just kidding. But if we could get the air conditioning turned on, I think that would help us all here, because I think it is a little warm in here. But let's move on. Mr. Backs, you want to go now? You want to go ahead and?
You guys want to go now, or I can go last?
Why don't you go last, if that's okay? And obviously, then, we're going to have the Hilton Head Island Bluffton Chamber of Commerce, Ms. Arianna Pernice, who is the VP of Visitor and Convention Bureau. Ms. Pernice, if you can come forward, we'd love to have you come and speak to us today. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Good afternoon, and thank you for putting this up. I appreciate it. My name is Arianna Pernice, and I'm with the Hilton Head Island Bluffton Chamber of Commerce, and I oversee the Visitor and Convention Bureau. Wonderful to see you this afternoon. And if you will, I'm going to take a little bit of time to walk through our fiscal year 2324 DMO marketing plan. As a DMO, our destination marketing organization for southern Beaufort County, the Hilton Head Island Bluffton Chamber of Commerce is charged with driving awareness and connecting visitors not only to the destination, but to the community and to our businesses. Sorry. It's okay. We do this with a mission, excuse me, with a vision of a welcoming world-class community embracing nature, culture, economic vibrancy for residents as well as for visitors, with a mission of to stimulate the regional economy while enhancing the quality of life for all. But how are we governed? I think we talk a lot about the oversight of tourism, and we are charged with responsible in tourism on a daily basis, but we do that through the filter of this wheel, which was really big on my presentation, but looks a little smaller there. So hopefully, you're able to see that, or have had a printed piece that you're able to look at. But we thought this was a good way to show synergy and partnership. We also, the organization ourself, we have our Board of Directors, but we also work alongside you as well as the Economic Development Committee as a partnership. We are accredited by Destinations International. We have oversight from the state tourism entities as well as Turk, and we also proceed with an annual independent audit. But before we can look forward, we have to look back. So we'll do that quickly with our year-end review. So again, this is capturing the calendar year of January through December. As we've all seen, people are talking about southern Beaufort County and South Carolina as a whole, but specifically wanted to call attention to some wonderful highlights that we have received over the past year from publications and outlets that you're all familiar with. But it's great to know that others are talking about us and in loving where we call home. So Travel and Leisure, Parents.com, Forbes, CBS News, Fodder's, as well as Market Watch and CNN, these are just a handful. The list goes on and on, and we're very excited that we get to call it home, but excited that we get to welcome people equally to enjoy what we, we get to do every day. But how are we gauging success? I think this is an important opportunity for us to look at and really dive into that virtual front door. You and I have met in the past, and we talk about that virtual front door. When we look at our access to talking about brands, about destinations, we're looking at how people access us. And yes, we do have our efforts tied to publications, whether those be in print or online, but we start first and foremost with the website. And that has become, from what we've known as a welcome center, has become a virtual welcome center. So though we do have staff on hand that do welcome when they get here, we start with that virtual front door. And those websites are visitblufftonandvisitdefusky.org. So what you can see here is if you look at those combined, we are up 31.8% to the year prior with 304,000 website visits. And so that's great. People are coming, they're looking at the websites, they're looking at all the wonderful, beautiful imagery that we have, the videos, but they're also shaking hands of our businesses. Right at the end of the day, we want to make sure that they're touching those that live and breathe here and are part of our community and those small businesses. So what did we do? We call those referrals, and we call them handshakes. So those handshakes are connecting the visitor online to the businesses of our community. And we did that with over 70,000 partner referrals or handshakes, which was up 8.6%, 8.6% to last year. But as we know, we can't rest on just the website alone. It's really this all-on, always-on approach that we take when it comes to tourism. So with the website, how are people finding us? Well, they're finding us through several different touchpoints, but social media, as we all know, is a wonderful platform that gets a lot of people to pay attention, and it pushes the web sitter to other various pages within the website. And we've had great success with Explore Bluffton, South Carolina, as well as Visit Bluffton, South Carolina, and those were both up to last year by, in total followers, we grew by 26%, almost 27%, and we grew our impressions, which are the eyeballs that see all of our efforts being pushed on social by 11.4%. At the end of the day, again, that's that first touchpoint when they're coming in to see on the web sitter and social media, but are they making a conversion? Are they coming to put a head in the bed? Right? And that's really the opportunity that we're talking about. So that hotel opportunity, we're looking specifically at Bluffton. The occupancy you see here at 61% is slightly down, just under 10% at 9.3% down to last year. Now, why is that? Well, as we all know, the world opened up, right? So there are a lot more choices out there when it comes to accommodations. And so, as we were one of the first communities back open post-COVID and quite early on in the COVID process, others are just now opening up. And so those that had frequented us or had called us home for over those three years or had experienced us for the first time now have a few more choices. So it's something that we're closely watching. But again, 10%, or just under 10% down is not something that is raising red flag, but we're washing, watching it mindfully. The good piece of that is that our average daily rate was up by 4.6%. We were garnering $306 per room night, which is great to see. The other pieces that I'm not sure that you have in hand, but I brought a couple, for example, are our physical pieces of fulfillment. So we produce both a regional book for the region of Hilton Head Island, Bluffton, and Defusky, and we also create a Bluffton book that also includes Defusky as well. These are distributed, a total amount of fulfillment that we pushed on both of these books was just under 100,000 units. However, we produce 110 in total. So there's 25,000 of this book produced and 85,000 of this book produced. And where are they sent? Well, they're sent to all of our AAA offices, all to our South Carolina Welcome Centers. They are fulfilled at all of our media events, our trade shows, as well as in our office for fulfillment, as well as mailed out for any email inquiries or phone calls that we receive. So I'm happy to leave these behind and share these with you later on, but these are being In addition, we are reaching our desired consumer through our partnerships with media platforms such as the Local Palette and Gardening Gun. When we pick a media platform, we're looking for those that, we'll dive into this a little bit later in the presentation, but who our desired consumer subset is. And so we're looking at the average household income, what they like to do for activities, where they like to travel, their propensity to travel. And when we look at that and we evaluate our media platforms, these are two that came into our funnel for this year, and that's again, Local Palette and Gardening Gun. The Local Palette platform and partnership ran from June 30th through October, early October of this past year, and that had generated over close to 30,000 impressions or eyeballs through a series of different touchpoints. So there was landing pages, there was, excuse me, a landing page, social impressions and social engagements. There was over six digital articles produced, so we're very excited about that partnership. And as well as Gardening Gun, which produced 2.3 million impressions. They have a bit of a broader reach, and we were able to do several branded content articles, and that ran from July through September. And we also hosted one of their editors within the town of Bluffton, so that was there, and that was great to see. In addition to the paid efforts on media, we also have our earned media. So the difference between our media efforts that we pay for and the earned is we have a team back in the office led by one of my counterparts, and she and her team work closely to build relationships with, this is just a sampling of some of the publications such as Town and Country, Southern Living, Gardening Gun, that work on the editorial side. And so they're fostering relationships all the time, learning what their interests are, what articles they're going to be producing, and she's constantly working with the team to kind of plant little seeds of interest. Okay, we have this over here that we can talk about. We have this coming down the pipeline. And so by building those relationships, she was able to earn, again, no charge or fee cost to this, over 148 mentions within the southern Beaufort County area. And that's great, because it saw over 540 million impressions. Again, if we put a dollar amount to that, that would cost near the $397,000 in ad value. Again, we did not pay for that. Those were earned and put through editorial, and it was wonderful to see that complement all of our media efforts that were in place. With a successful year behind us, what are we looking to do when we go forward in this new fiscal year? We find it very important to make sure that when we're talking about southern Beaufort County, we're talking about unique identifiers. We're talking about the pieces that we know travelers are looking for today, even with all the changes that we've seen through COVID. Our attention spans are getting smaller and smaller when we're making decisions, and even with the world opening back up. These six that you see in front of you create unique opportunities for us to talk about southern Beaufort County. So of those six, we're leading with our Gullah Gichi Cultural Heritage Corridor. We're talking about deep history, culture, and arts, the National Historic Register designations, talking about our natural beauty, waterways, and parks, local culinary and local market experiences, as well as all of our unique festival and events. We talked a little bit earlier about our target demographic in this opportunity, and this is driven through our visitor profile study, which we do annually for the town of Bluffton, and that produces our efforts of who we're looking for to target. It actually skews a bit more male in this opportunity, which is a unique effort that hasn't happened in quite some time. How are we getting to that information? So 61% are skewing male. So when they are interested in learning about southern Beaufort County, Defusky or Towne Bluffton in particular, or unincorporated Bluffton, they are reaching out to our websites. They're raising their hand to say they're interested by inquiring about one of our vacation planners or signing up for our newsletter. And we ask them in their question, just a simple, quick question, "When are you planning on traveling?" And by them identifying a date, we can then reach back to them a couple of weeks after their proposed timeframe, and we follow up with, "How was it? What did you love about your experience into southern Beaufort County?" And the person who's filling that out, he might, or she might, be the person making the decision. And the person who's filling that out, he might or she might be the person making the decision in the household. But they are, in this instance, the male was more prominent in those responses. So he in this effort is skewing a bit more male as the decision maker. They are an affluent traveler, a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand household income. Fifty three percent have received an undergraduate degree or higher. They have a propensity to travel with two to four trips per year, and they're staying at length for four nights. So we actually funnel that a little bit further. And we also want to target not only just who they are and what they have a propensity to do. It's the family traveler, the millennial traveler, the affluent traveler, so on and so forth. We want to get as far into their nuances of travel that we can. How can we better cater our messaging to them? We talked about how do we reach them when there's a shortened attention span? Well, the approach in marketing has evolved. Where in years past, and so several years ago, we could buy one print ad and we could say, we did this. And it was circulation of X, Y and Z, and it was great. But now with our attention span, and we can all think of this as consumers, think about when we're sitting home and or we're out and about and we have our tablet, our phone, the TV, the streaming radio, something else is on and it's vying for our attention. These are the things that we have to take into account. And when we're approaching our effort of reaching our desired consumer, we have to cast a pretty broad net, right? And we're going to pull them through. But what's that one piece that's going to say, hey, I want to think about Southern Beaufort County. I want to think about Bluffton or Defuski, and I want to travel down, and I want to see what it's about. These are interests that I love and I want to see more of it. So we might do that by reaching them with a key word that they recognize in an article. It might be through a beautiful print piece that they saw. And it might have been all of those things, right? And it might have been those things over time that's pulled them through that funnel that said, I'm a qualified visitor and I'm going to shake that hand of the, through the website into a partner. And so that always on approach with these pieces that you see around this circle are always important to have on. At some point, they're always firing. Our approach to reaching that desired consumer are through these five strategies with one overarching goal. The overarching goal for us regarding tourism is to ensure there's a qualified visitation to the destination. What does qualified mean? Really checks the box of who that visitor profile detail was what we laid out. But it's also, are they putting their head in a bed and are they investing in our community while they're here? And are they investing in it not only with spending time and some of their dollars here, but are they being respectful also as a visitor? Are they respecting the values that we have as a community, that we have for our destination that we love so much? So those are kind of pulled through as an overarching goal, and then we have the five strategies. I believe this presentation was sent a bit earlier to you, so I will go through the five. But just know in the back, I have each one broken out as a sample of what I would do within each five with the team. But we want to build ground awareness and support qualified visitation to the destination among our target markets. We'd like to drive the discovery and exploration of the destination with deeper storytelling and destinations key attributes. So we talked about that a little bit earlier. How can we pour a bit deeper insight to some of our local businesses, to that rich history and culture that we have here? Those pieces are what are going to pull and differentiate us and separate us from our destinations that surround us that people also have the option to visit. We want to leverage a strategic mix of targeted methods to identify and reach those qualified users. So as we think of a funnel, we have cast that broad net, we want to pull that qualified visitor through. They've raised their hand, they travel. They raise their hand, they make a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand plus household income. They have the propensity to travel. But not only that, as as well first or second level that they're coming through in that funnel, are they qualified more because they love some of the attributes that we have. They love the Low Country, they want to be here, they want to be with us, they love the accommodations we have to offer, they love our culinary experiences, so on and so forth, and we're pulling them through till eventually they're here. We want to create an understanding of and respect for the delicate ecosystem of the destination. Responsible tourism is paramount for us as we move forward and has been in our DNA since we have been promoting tourism. We love tourism, we understand it's a number one economic driver for us here in the Beaufort County area. However, we want a qualified visitor that has respect for our area as well. When they walk by, we want them to be responsible when they're laying their head in a bed and they're enjoying our touchpoints. We don't want them to just be willy nilly and walk away and say, okay, and on to the next. We find that when you tie our core values as a community to tourism, they themselves end up loving it just like we do. And they call it home for even if it's two to four nights, six nights, so on and so forth, but they're here and they're investing. We also want to enhance the leisure as well as the group business through qualified visitation. So yes, we are leisure focused, but there is a fair share of group and meeting business that we would love to pull through back since post COVID to the destination. Because that's so important. There are not only beds to put their heads in, but there is meeting and group space that needs to be filled as well. And we have business that can be done here in small to medium sized groups that we're very qualified to have and to host. And so we will be working as that is emerging back and more offices are allowing their employees to travel, we will be targeting them to come back. And then again, as I said, I have those five strategies and their tactics broken out for you to see in a more detailed level, but I won't go through each one. The budget for us and working with you and our partners north of the Broad with Rob Wells, we are working against a three hundred and eighty five thousand dollar budget for Southern Beaufort County. And this is how we've broken it out. And it does talk to, each line item talks to each one of the pieces that I went through today. And again, I apologize because it's small, but I promise it was bigger.
That's right. I'm sure we can, we're going to get your presentation as well. So any questions that we have for Ms. Pernice with regard to the?
Since I couldn't read that, how much did you get last year and what are you asking for this year? I'm just cutting to the point.
I would have to pull up the budget. I don't have last year's in front of me. I apologize. Mr. Hayes. Thank you.
I mean, I see your budget is three eighty five, three hundred and eighty.
Right, and that's been working with, I believe you work with our controller, and we anticipate based on actuals and forecasts going forward, is that correct?
So they receive two different funding streams. It's by ordinance, they receive the local accommodations tax, which is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for the DMO. And then their second funding source is a state accommodations tax, which is, they get fifteen percent and the CBB gets fifteen percent. And it depends on really what's collected in the state accommodations tax. That number can vary from year to year, but if y'all need it, I can give it to you over the past several years, what they receive in total.
And this request is in addition to the?
No, no, no. They, this was just to kind of say, this is what we're doing with the money that we've given you and given us a heads up.
Okay.
Any other questions? Obviously, the Hilton Head Bluffton Chamber of Commerce is our designated marketing organization. So again, that's where that money goes, both north and south of the Broad. So again, any questions for them as we sit here today? No, Ms. Pernice, you all do a wonderful job. We appreciate all you do. And again, the organization has obviously won many, many top awards that you didn't even talk about over the past couple of years, being Chamber of the Year twice or three times in the past ten years. I think it's three?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Y'all do a great job, so thank you for coming today. Appreciate you being here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Yep. Well, we made him wait last time and he patiently waited, then we kicked him out. So Mr. Baxley, love to have you come up and speak to us today, and the floor is yours, so.
All right, well, good afternoon. I appreciate you guys having me and allowing me the time to talk a little bit about Beaufort Memorial and our budget request for this year. In the respect of each of your time, I won't go through the whole presentation. There is a lot of slides. I think most of you know what we're about and what our mission is. And so what I'll try and do is hit the meat of the presentation and then get to my request. So I think specifically just who we are and who we serve. We are two hundred and one beds, the only not-for-profit hospital, the largest hospital between Savannah and Charleston. We have well over three hundred physicians on medical staff. We have two thousand employees, including contract staff at this point, as we've grown further south abroad. We have an inpatient rehab unit, an eighteen-bed mental health unit, the only mental health unit in a three-county area, seven operating rooms, two cancer centers with the state-of-the-art linear accelerators, same as you'd find in Savannah or M U S C. You have an ambulatory surgery center that sits a couple of blocks down Reba Road, as well as interventional cardiology, labor and delivery, several robotics programs in terms of minimally invasive surgery. And most recently, we did purchase thirty percent of a home health company, which I'll talk about a little bit later in the presentation. And you see some of our locations, so you see we serve both north and south of the Broad. You see a little dot up there in Hampton County as well, where we have a rural health clinic, Harrison Peebles Health Center, but you see several dots in the last couple of years, South the Broad River, including everything north the Broad. Our board of trustees, I think you guys appoint these members, so I won't go into detail about who these people are. All I will say is, is a nice mix of both business people and as well as physicians. You see about four physicians on our board of trustees, which means we have a good makeup of both the clinical side and the business side and healthcare. And several of these people have healthcare experience as well outside of the physicians. Here's who we serve in terms of volumes. Again, being the largest hospital between Savannah and Charleston, we are the busiest hospital. We're doing eighty six hundred admissions, two hundred and fifteen thousand outpatient registrations. So think chemo infusion, MRI, CT, physical therapy visits, forty four thousand ED visits, ten thousand surgeries, a thousand deliveries, and two hundred and sixty two thousand physician office visits. And if I told you what we're projecting this year, it'd be about ninety five hundred admissions, two hundred and fifty thousand outpatient registrations, forty four thousand ED visits, fourteen thousand surgeries, a thousand deliveries, and three hundred thousand physician visits. And even that doesn't cover the waterfront. And I'm looking at Alice right now, Councilwoman Howard, she helps us on the board. She sees the volumes and understands what I'm talking about. And then our financials last year, ultimately, we ended up spending about two hundred and ninety million dollars and we made about two hundred and ninety million dollars. This year, that's projected more around three hundred million dollars in total expenses, mostly being made up of staff wage increases, benefit increases and heavy inflationary pressure in terms of supplies as well. I will tell you, we are still seeing, as some of you probably understand, major supply chain interruptions still, even to this day. And our vendors are telling us, expected at least through Christmas of this year, supply chain interruption, meaning you can't get what you normally could get prior to COVID. Our charitable mission, so as you guys know, we have a foundation. That foundation is very important to what we do. They help provide about five hundred thousand dollars a year in capital purchases for the community. The endowment pays out about a million dollars in terms of operating expenses. And then they helped fund a few new programs, which we'll talk about in just a few minutes. One of the programs we launched during COVID and is still going today is our Food and Securities Program. We currently provide fifty meals a day, Monday through Friday. Work with Marshview Organic Farms and a few other charitable organizations to deliver those meals on St. Helena Island, the Ladies Island, every day. And that ends up being about two hundred and fifty meals a week. We estimate that to be about sixty five, seventy thousand dollars in donated food a year. Pretty simple, actually. We just prepare an additional fifty meals every time we prepare dinner for our patients. And we have a census about a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty. We just make an additional fifty meals and then deliver it each day. We started a transportation service. Again, we found that a lot of our patients who come to either the emergency room or to chemo or radiation oncology sometimes had trouble with transportation. We have two vans now, and you see that last year they drove about eighty nine hundred miles. If you say Uber at two dollars a mile, that saved patients about eighteen thousand dollars in Uber. We're going to double that this year because we have a secondary van. And so we expect to drive almost eighteen thousand to twenty thousand miles to help patients get to and from appointments. And again, most of those are cancer patients or sickle cell anemia patients through our sickle cell clinic or discharged patients who can't afford a ride. You guys have probably seen the mobile wellness unit. That is nothing new. We did upgrade a couple of years ago, but you just see the value of some of the free care that we provide at community centers and churches through our programs. But you can see, for example, we did forty five health screening events last year serving nine hundred and sixty people. And then our mission is also to serve those who can't afford to pay for the care that they receive. Part of that is in partnering with the Good Neighbor Medical Clinic. They now sit on our campus, that is rent free for the Good Neighbor Medical Clinic. We value that at about seventy five thousand. And this is their numbers, not ours, but these are the free tests we provide to their patients. So three hundred and ninety nine lab tests, a hundred and forty imaging procedures, and they use that, they value it and apply for their funding and grants each year. So those are their numbers that they value, not our numbers. And then just some of the chronically ill, low income uninsured that we provide, this is through our Access Health Program. I won't go into all of those numbers, but everything that we do, including imaging procedures, screening mamos, colonoscopies, it's about six hundred thousand dollars in free care through coordinated care and Access Health. And you can see the reduction in ED visits for these patients, as well as a twenty three percent reduction in inpatient admissions, which is really what the point of the program is, is to keep people out of the hospital. And then our sickle cell clinic has been what I think is a huge success. We currently have fifty six patients enrolled. You see Anne Marie Gault, she actually just won a Nurse of the Year Award. Fifty nurses were honored this past year, and she was one of them for the state of South Carolina. We did seven hundred, almost seven hundred sickle cell encounters last year. And you can see that we actually reduced these patients' visits to the ER by thirty seven, thirty five percent and decreased their hospital stays by forty seven percent. And you can see that the gentlemen there are actually, we've been able to treat these patients. They can actually hold steady jobs now because they're not in distress and coming to the ER time and time again. So we're very proud of the sickle cell clinic. And then, as you guys know, we are treating the hidden epidemic. So we moved on from COVID and on to the opioid pandemic and substance abuse. You see Dr. Phil Cusamano there, but we did open a substance abuse clinic. In the last year, the year and a half, he treated a hundred and nine patients on an ongoing basis. And you can see that a lot of these patients are very successful in this treatment in that we continue to actually recruit more providers to the substance abuse clinic and addiction medicine as we speak. Don't harm me, heal me, be nice to me. This is what we open up every orientation with. This is what our patients expect. Instead of going through the list of awards that we've won, I'm going to point your attention to the most recent one, which is a top five percent in the nation. So we were named this past year as a top thirty hospital for outcomes in the entire nation. So that's out of three thousand acute care hospitals, we're in the top five percent. And that talks about mortality rates, readmission rates, bloodstream infections, surgical site infections, falls with injury. We do a really good job at preventing our patients from medical harm and medical error and medical death, right? And we know that three hundred thousand people a year die from medical error in hospitals. And that's why we're very proud of this award. And you see it on billboards as you drive through Beaufort in the Bluffton area. Big part of what we did last year is supporting our workforce. You guys are very aware of the PATH program. I appreciate Hank in particular for helping spearhead this, as well as Eric Greenway. They were instrumental in helping and working with the hospital in developing this program. But really, this is a triple aim approach. First, we talk about mental wellness and burnout. Obviously, through the pandemic, healthcare workers experienced a good bit of burnout and fatigue. We talk about financial wellness. And lastly, we talk about education and upward mobility within the organization. We launched a bunch of burnout, a number of burnout mitigation platforms. We hired a wellness coordinator. We offer housing assistance programs through Community Works, ten thousand dollars for our employees to buy houses in the Beaufort County area. We created family meal deals. And then also we launched things like The Hub, which is a communication platform for us. We did open a learning center through COVID. And right now, we are working to move that daycare learning center on campus. You see a picture of the modular facility. It's about a one and a half million dollar project and will house a hundred children. Right now, our program houses sixty. And ultimately, what it does is it allows for a sliding scale tuition where it's sixty percent at the highest of what your normal rate would be in Beaufort County. But for some, through scholarship models and everything else, it's free for their children, depending on income and needs. So we do look to open that up next year as we break ground in the next ninety days next to the campus. The PATH program itself, we've seen close to now, we'll graduate another seven to eight participants in the PATH program this week, actually. So we'll have graduated well over sixty. And this is really addressing the workforce shortage issue that we're seeing. And this pretty clear, South Carolina, that we're headed off a cliff. I'll give you an example for nursing. We're scheduled to be short ten thousand nurses in seven years. That's the fourth worst in the nation, per capita. That's the fourth worst in the nation. So South Carolina is in a bad way in terms of the workforce and healthcare specifically. And so we're trying to train our own, right? And right now, what we've done is we've gone internally. We have recruited from those entry level positions and allowed them to get the education with scholarships to become patient care techs and phlebotomists and EKG techs. And now we're going to the high schools and having job fairs to the outside world, asking them, hey, healthcare experience not required, we'll turn you into a healthcare provider, we just need the right attitude and work ethic. And that's how we're trying to generate, I think, new healthcare, new people to the healthcare workforce, if you will. That's a picture of the class right there, the inaugural class. One thing I'm very proud of, of the thirteen that are you seeing in this picture, twelve of them passed the certification exam. That's a ninety two percent pass rate. That's pretty phenomenal for any school, much less one that was started at the hospital in just the past year. Ninety two percent pass rate for their certification exams. And then lastly, with the PATH program, this is our nursing school. And I mentioned again that we are scheduled to be short ten thousand nurses in seven years in the state of South Carolina. And so we've got to start doubling the enrollment of those entering the workforce. This is a partnership between us, USC B, obviously Beaufort County and the city of Beaufort. This is going to do two things in the immediate. We are going to build this on the campus. We will leverage our staff to be. We will leverage our staff to be adjunct faculty. This will allow USCB to double their enrollment of their traditional program in the next year to two years. That is needed, obviously, because the next two years, we're going to graduate a whole lot more nurses than what we've been doing in this community. But secondarily to that, we want to create an accredited accelerated nursing program that will allow for a career change. So you have a four-year degree, you want to become a nurse. The accelerated program allows you to become an RN in one year's time through the University of South Carolina, Beaufort Memorial. Again, trying to add more nurses to the workforce to address this shortage. Beaufort County in particular, I don't have to tell you about the growth rate or the volumes I just explained, but we need more nurses in order to keep up with the growing demand, that is for sure. A few pictures there of the school. And then expanding access to care. So every time I give a presentation, I address access to care head-on. I'll be the first to tell you, we are not doing enough to meet the demand, but we are trying. If you have a primary, if you're new to the area, you need a primary care appointment, you will wait six to eight months. I will tell you, that is not without trying. We have 110 employed providers in our medical group. These are just the providers we recruited last year, and that is not all of them. I just couldn't fit the pictures on the slide. We've recruited 70 providers in six years' time, new to the area, and you see a few of them are oncology surgeons like Tara Grohovick, psychiatrists like Dr. Scott Walmer. You see Rob Smith as a family medicine doctor, pulmonologist, spine surgeons, et cetera. We've recruited a ton of providers, but we still can't get ahead of the population growth and those that need appointments. But we continue to try to recruit about 10 a year new to the community. Our Okati facility, we have outgrown this space. It is 70,000 square feet, and we're already looking for new space. It's the busiest facility we have, but we get a lot of good reviews on this facility, and we need more. And that's why there's such a long waitlist to see patients, see physicians in this marketplace. Brits Cooks and People is really our attempt to address primary care, and you see our partnership with telemedicine, kiosk and Publix, but we have now four kiosk and Publix grocery stores. But I think the unique thing about this partnership is Publix delivers meds to our patients before discharge, regardless of their ability to pay, which means even if you don't have insurance and you can't get your meds post-discharge, you're going to get them at least before you leave the hospital in a 30- to 60-day supply in hopes to keep you out of the hospital. And then our urgent cares, we opened three of these over the last four years. These were instrumental in responding to COVID-19. But just to show you how busy they are, our slowest one sees on average about 50 a day, and our fastest one, our most busy, sees on average about 60 to 70 a day. You put that on top of 120 visits in the ER, we're seeing well over 200 patients a day acutely in the community, just trying to, again, meet the need. And then our home health agency, we did buy 30% of a Medisys. Part of that is because during COVID, we learned that care is going to continue to expand outside the four walls of the hospital. Hospital at Home became a pilot program with Medicare. Skilled Nursing Facility at Home became a pilot program with Medicare. Medicare is going to make these permanent programs. Partnering with the Medisys allows us to start understanding how to provide care in the four walls of the home versus in the hospital. And so that's why we partnered with the Medisys. They've got a good reputation, high-quality scores, and they've been good partners to us. We purchased 30% of them a year ago. Couple of projects on the horizon for Beaufort Memorial. The first one I want to talk about is our crisis stabilization unit. So currently, the state is asking hospitals to respond to the mental health crisis. As I discussed, we already have an 18-bed mental health unit, but that doesn't mean that every person is appropriate for that inpatient mental health unit. Some have dual diagnoses such as substance abuse, others are zero, some are pediatrics. Some don't need an inpatient admission, but they do need stabilization in some care for three, four, five, six hours. So we want to be responsive to building a new psych-specialized unit in the emergency room to include observation areas, quiet rooms, a nurses station, et cetera. This is better for us, it's better for the patient, it creates, it creates or reduces elopement risk, and is a safer environment in the hospital for mental health patients. If you walk through a busy day in the ER, you may see people all over the hallways with stretchers because we are sometimes full. Some of those patients are mental health patients with security sitters beside them, et cetera. That's not a place for somebody who needs treatment to be in a hallway in a busy ER on a stretcher waiting for placement. This would allow us to see them, treat them, and discharge them in a safe environment. We project this total capital cost to be $1.2 million. The total ongoing operational cost at about $915,000. That's specifically to staff for very specialized psychiatric-trained nurses, mental health techs, licensed social workers and psychiatrists to staff this. I also do believe this could be used as a dual diagnosis unit to also treat substance abuse patients, if necessary. And I know that we've talked a little bit with Mr. Greenway about what that might mean in terms of responding to that epidemic as well using this center. We are installing a new cardiac cath lab, as well as refreshing our patient tower right now, and installing a new nurse call system. Those two projects are valued at about $5 million. We do about 500 cardiac catheterizations or interventions a year, i.e., you arrive in our ER, you have chest pain, we can treat that right there versus shipping you out to Charleston or Savannah. We do, again, 500 of those procedures a year and growing. And then two other big projects still coming. Obviously, we have been trying to build a hospital in the Bluffton area for the better part of four to five years. The CON laws continue to be an issue there, and we do have a court date scheduled in September. Obviously, the House is, again, debating CON laws. The 3M Committee is currently taking that up. We're watching that very closely as to what may or may not happen with the CON laws and that legislation. But as of today, again, we have a court date in September with the Administrative Law Courts to defend the need for a hospital, and those challenging it will try to defend why Bluffton doesn't need a hospital. And then our OR renovation, that is set to kick off in September. Fortunately, air handling units take 46 weeks to procure, and so we're a little delayed based on needing new air handling units as part of the construction. But again, most of this is funded by a HERSA grant, about $18 million, and then the other $5 million or so is funded through the foundation and charitable donations. So that's where the $24 million is coming to renovate the ORs. But that will add an additional two ORs to our complement of seven, turning to nine in the hospital. And I can tell you, good luck finding block time right now with all the new surgeons we've recruited. They're fighting over it, and we need additional two ORs to accommodate now the 14,000 surgeries. When I arrived here in 2016, we were doing 8,000 surgeries a year. Now we're doing 14, growing to 15,000 surgeries a year. So we've almost doubled the amount of surgeries we've done in the last five to six years. And then lastly, our budget requests. So here are the three requests that we have. One is ongoing. So over the last four to five years, Beaufort Memorial, the county has generously given Beaufort Memorial $1 million to fund indigent care and psychiatric care. I will tell you, our budget has grown considerably, as you guys can see, since, I think, 2016, 2017. And we're on a budget of $300 million and over 2,000 employees. At that time, we were 1,400 employees. But we do about $14.3 million specifically in charity care in the ER. So 14% of our patients have no insurance that enter the ER. And in psychiatric care, one in three of our psychiatric patients have no insurance. When we admit those patients, they stay an average of six days, and we lose about $2 million a year on psychiatric care. Unfortunately, payers don't pay well for psychiatric care, that is just not something they've caught up with, Medicare, Medicaid, TRICARE, et cetera. They just don't pay well for psychiatric care, and psychiatric providers and nurses are coming at a premium these days. And so we sit at about $2 million loss to basically fund that inpatient mental health unit and the outpatient care. We're also the only facility that accepts, outside of Coastal Empire, all insurances or no insurance for outpatient mental health care as well. I spoke a little bit about the crisis stabilization unit. We believe through our pro forma, after $900,000 through billing insurance, we'll receive about $450,000 back. So we're asking for $500,000 a year for three years for the crisis stabilization unit. Again, specifically, we think this will do a couple of things. One, it will, it will reduce transports. So right now, the Sheriff's Department or one of the police departments contracts out any transports to patients that need facilities that are outside of Beaufort Memorial scope. We believe through this MPATH model, and if you read the white papers, 80% of all those patients can actually be seen and discharged from a crisis stabilization unit. So we think there's a big opportunity to reduce the need to transport patients to, say, Charleston or Columbia or at times Greenville, as far as we'll transport these patients at times, as well as, again, I think we have an ability to do some addiction medicine in here as well in terms of crisis stabilization with peer support specialists. And then lastly, a one-time ask for the learning center. Again, we're very focused on workforce development, and one of the things we've realized is that, again, childcare is a big issue in Beaufort County, as well as affordable housing, as you guys are aware. And this is another way we're trying to combat the cost of living in this community. So if we can continue to lower the cost of childcare, it's another way to fight inflation because I can tell you, trying to fight inflation by just raising wages by 5% to 10% every year is, is the calculus doesn't work for us. And so we've got to figure out a way to lower the cost of living for our employees and daycare, and then workforce housing, which is probably a whole nother meeting, is very high on our agenda right now. So total ask on a one-year basis is $2.75 million. Again, previously, the county has funded a million dollars approximately over the last three to four years. That is the end of my presentation. I will take questions, comments, or concerns.
Any questions for Mr. Baxley?
I do.
Yes, Mr. Taverick, go ahead.
So with all the focus on mental health from the government, I'm talking federal now, and all the mental health, aren't they providing money for mental health facilities? You have 200, $2 million for ongoing supportive emergency room indigent care. Are federal funds involved in that? Do you have state funding? I mean, this is their big thing, talking about mental health.
So it's going to be different for ER care. So I'll give you a good example. Had we expanded Medicaid as a state, that would have been helpful, right? We didn't do that as a state, and I'm not an elected official, so I can't speak to the reasons why. But that was one opportunity, I think, for, you know, the federal government to step in and help with such things as the mental health crisis. We do get dish payments. Dish payments just go to cover the cost of care because we actually lose money on Medicaid, and it's mostly Medicare patients. So we submit a cost report to the federal government, and through those patients, they help fund whatever we lost on caring for those patients. But there's nothing specifically from the federal government that is helping to fund the ER care outside of dish payments and expansion of Medicaid services.
And I see here the little line under $500,000 a year for three years for the crisis stabilization. It says, "Without this funding, we may not be able to secure $1.2 million from the state."
So interestingly, how this, how this works is DMH is actually not putting this money forward, but South Carolina Medicaid, for whatever reason, is moving forward with some mental health initiatives through the state of South Carolina. They are not providing, they have about $35 million in grant money. That is coming from the federal government, but it's only for capital build-out. They will not use that money for any operational support. So one of the things that they're asking each applicant to do is essentially, show us how you will fund this for the next three years, based on our pro forma and based on the fact that we do think that we will see one in three that are unfunded. We do see one in three that would probably be Medicaid, and then another one would be some sort of insurance pay, if you will. We will probably see about $450,000 to $500,000 a year in reimbursement, which leaves about $400,000 as the delta or gap. That's why we're asking for that, because we're just going to see if we can partner with the county to help fund said thing to break even on said unit versus trying to fund it through other resources. Because if we take from, say, other resources, that means we forego other projects possibly if we're funding that $500,000 ourselves. So that $2 million gap on mental health services turns to $2.5 million gap on mental health services. And that's one thing we are trying to avoid is, is letting that, that, that gap grow even wider on mental health services, because it's becoming a little unsustainable.
So what if you don't get the increased funding from council? What's your fallback?
We'll go back and see if we can pull it from operations. I mean, that's, that's our only fallback. I mean, right now, I mean, that's where we would pull it from. If, if the county council does not move forward to three years at 500, then what we would probably do is go back and say, where would we take it from in the budget? And again, our budget's 300 million, so we'd have to reduce some expenses and other areas to account for that, because right now, we're working on a break-even budget. You know, COVID's not been kind to hospitals and health systems. I can tell you, just Google hospital health systems bankruptcies, layoffs, or foreclosures, or mergers. Hospitals are losing millions of dollars where once they were profitable, most of them are now in the red. So, you know, we're not in the red, but at the same time, we're not where we were three years ago due to contract labor. And we've taken a path specifically at Beaufort Memorial where some hospitals are cutting all contract labor, and that's creating, I would say, problems in emergency rooms. You can't admit patients because you don't have beds available. We've kept our contract labor at great expense, but we've been able to admit all the patients from the ER. And so patient throughput has not been sacrificed nor has patient safety. But that is putting a strain on our financials because we continue to try to employ contract labor at what is more than double what it was prior to COVID, as well as recruit more nurses, increase wages, benefits have increased, et cetera. So I would just tell you, the pressures on hospitals right now are greater than they ever have been before.
So I have a note here that based on your 2022 auditive financial statements, you showed an increase in net position of about $20 million. Why do you not fund some of these additional needs from that funding?
Well, we show a net increase in $20 million in terms of revenue, because we saw an increase of $20 million in expenses as well. So back to, so our position increased by $20 million in terms of net revenue going from 270 to 290, but our expenses also increased to about 290. So if I go back to the third or fourth slide, we, we ended up doing 270 in expenses last, two years ago versus 290 in expenses this past year. We expect it to be 300 million this year. Again, most of that is last year, we gave our staff increases of about 10% to 15% in wages, an average of about 12, actually. The highest was 20%, the lowest was about 5% to 6% depending on your job category, and our benefits increased about $1.2 to $2 million a year. Part of that is the pension plan. We receive a 1% increase on the pension plan every year because we are government hospital. So that's about 19% of salaries we contribute back to the state pension, and then our benefits have increased about $1.5 million every year the last two or three years due to healthcare expense. So between that and then supply is going up about 10% to 15% post-COVID, and, and chemo drugs being a part of that as well. And even right now, we're experiencing chemo drug shortages. So even, even today, we can't always get the chemo drugs that we need, so we're having to figure out substitutes even for oncology care these days. And so drug costs are going up, so supply goes down, that means costs go up essentially, which is another thing we're dealing with.
So I'm looking at your slide that was early on, and it said, basically, your operating revenue, and then it says, "Total operating profit, $1.38 million."
Yep, yes, ma'am.
So couldn't some of that be used to fund some of these programs?
I would say that $1.38 million is going to fund the next round of raises that we're giving and the benefit expense, as well as the 1% increase on the pension plan that we're experiencing this year.
And when you run these programs, like the summer path and the nursing school, is there a requirement that they work in Beaufort County when they come out?
Yep, if they take, they are scholarships, and so they commit to a two-year commitment if they take, if they go through the PATH program.
Okay. I'll let somebody else go ahead.
Ms. Howard?
Tell, what commitment for the $10,000 for first home ownership, how many years are they committed?
Five years.
Five. Another question. I think you have applied for the opioid grant money that the county is going to be receiving in...
Not yet. We've had one meeting thus far, and I thought it was a good meeting, and we've got that information.
And that's not, this, this has no impact on that, your budget proposed?
No, uh-uh. That's, that's, I think, very new to us, and we're still working with Mr. Green Smith and his team as to what that might look like, but I thought we had a very good meeting with our medical director, our director of the ER, and how we can work with the county to expand, to treat addiction, you know, substance abuse.
What percentage would you estimate of your nurses or contract nurses?
Uh, right now, we have, I'd have to go, I'd have to go back and look at the percentage. I can tell you how many nurses are contract nurses. We have about fifty contract nurses in the hospital.
And they're, they're based out, the contract nurses are very, very much more expensive than your...
Correct. They're at about ninety dollars an hour. And we're also recruiting internationally. And just for comparison, MUFC, who has a nursing school, has recruited over a hundred and twenty Filipino nurses to fill their gaps. That's, so if MUFC is struggling to recruit nurses and recruiting internationally, and they have their own nursing school, you can only imagine kind of what community hospitals are dealing with.
Thank you.
Mr. Glover?
Yes, Mr. Baxley, I, I had some questions, just like Councilmember Anne Marie did on mentors. But I'm not gonna ask that, because of your budget requests, I'm, I'm not gonna ask anything that would give an idea of increasing the budget, so I'm gonna leave that a mental health issue alone. I do have a personal one.
Yes, sir.
And it's a, it's a loaded question, so I'm gonna let you know before you even answer. In your program on home, home health, that you're going and visitating, visiting your patients, have you run into any problems with your workers coming back and saying that because of condition of roads, they can't service these patients?
I would say no, not yet. I've not asked the question either.
You said no.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Passman?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Russell, you said that the Okati Pavilion is kind of maxed out, you're looking to expand that. Is the certificate of need affecting the ability to expand that facility?
That, well, no and yes. You know, in order to expand, if we were to expand another facility, we would do both physician clinics, which don't require CON, but also look at maybe some more outpatient facility, hospital-based sort of opportunities, and those would require a CON in today's world. I would tell you that I feel like Beaufort Memorial would have been better, in a better position today, if we were allowed to have moved forward with that hospital in Bluffton three years ago, than, than having to still stall and wait and wait to expand those services. I, I feel like that would have created a much stronger system, a system that's better, would be better adept even responding to the pandemic and meeting our population where they are. I'd tell you, even now, we're seeing more and more ambulances and people coming from Hilton Head and Bluffton zip codes to the emergency room than we ever have before. So the CON has been, I think, a barrier to us expanding care and to us becoming an even more successful system than what we are today. You know, there's, I said, but there's a lot of debate on that right now.
Understood. Thank you. Speaking of zip codes, in your presentation, you talked about transportation covering twenty-three zip codes, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, sir.
All right. And I know twenty-three zip code doesn't exist within Beaufort County, so how far out do you extend your transportation?
YMC Hampton, Charleston at times, we cross Georgia borders at times. Beaufort County, obviously, Hampton County, Jasper County, Accoleton County. You know, we're, we're, we're pretty far-reaching in terms of where our patients come from, how they enter our system. Majority of them are in Beaufort County. I mean, we say twenty-three zip codes, but majority of them are in, are in Beaufort County, with a, a good bit in Hampton, given our rural health clinic position up there.
All right. Good. So questions from me would be, so you're thinking there's gonna be a three hundred million dollars coming up here, and obviously, you guys have grown and grown and grown, and our, our portion has stayed the same or has not kept up with where you are. So in the past, we've been closer to one-third of a percent, so you're asking us to go to that, that one percent increase to try to stay with what you're doing. And you've done a great job, there's no doubt about that. We are all very pleased with what you're doing. So real quick, tell us how much of your budget is, is capital improvements of that three hundred million dollars? And then also, if you can just touch on what kind of surplus you've had in the past and where you are now, because again, you know you're a nonprofit, you still have to have a surplus, and where your surplus is at this time?
So what I would say is, right, I said, right now, we're operating on, on a break-even budget, a little bit better than the break-even through, what are we, in March, through March of this year. Our days cash on hand sits at about ninety days now. People always ask, so ninety, a day's cash for us is about eight hundred thousand dollars, so it takes about eight hundred thousand dollars a day. Now, prior to, when we first came to county council to request a day's cash for us was five hundred thousand. So what I would say is, over the last five to six years, our days' cash has increased three hundred thousand dollars a day to run the hospital and health system. Ninety days' cash for us right now is eight, is eight hundred thousand, so what is that, sixty, seventy million dollars in reserve? We have no debt, so what I would say, people always ask, is that good or bad for nonprofit hospitals? Well, I would say, a lot of nonprofit hospitals will tell you they have two hundred days, days' cash on hand, but they have two hundred million dollars in debt. And so the bank owns a lot of that, right? We have no debt, so, you know, we own all that, so we're not obligated on any sort of note. So that ninety days is our ninety days, and, and not obligated to Regions or TD or anything else of that nature. Capital budget's different, so this year's our capital budget, not including the big projects, but overall was about six million dollars. And then, you obviously, you saw some of the big projects, but for example, the nursing school is funded by a number of partnership dollars, grant dollars, et cetera. The OR renovation of twenty-four million is funded at grant dollars and foundation dollars as well, so that is not inclusive in that. And so you're looking at, and we have some deferred capital, so I say this year's capital was five million, but for example, the nurse call, we've deferred for two years because we couldn't get parts because of COVID. So we actually ordered our new nurse call system two years ago, and it's taken us two years to get all of the parts in to actually start the project. So some of that would be deferred capital. So this year was about six, deferred capital about two for the previous years, because we couldn't get what we needed. So we're looking at about an eight million dollar capital project outside of the big ones that you see today.
Great. Any other questions for Mr. Baxley?
Well, he commented, you commented you have no debt, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So if we don't fund this to two point seven five million, is it possible you'd have to go and do a debt service for some of that?
It's possible. I mean, we have a revolving line of credit, twenty million dollars with Regions at a, I would say, a fairly good rate, because we took it out well before the interest rates skyrocketed. So, yeah, we, we could go to debt, I would prefer not to. If, if it absolutely possible, we worked pretty hard to get out of debt.
Yeah.
And, and worked pretty hard to stop answering a lot of questions from the banks every month. And, and so we, we prefer not to, but obviously, that is an option.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, good.
I wanna make sure I understand now. We're currently funding about a million dollars, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
And their request is two point seven five million?
Right.
And just, total, yeah. And, and a million of that is, in addition to five hundred is, is specific to a particular project, and then two seventy-five is a one-time ask for that one point five million dollar project for the learning center daycare for our employees.
And that current meeting is tied to the millage, right? Got you, okay. Just wanna make sure I understand.
Yes, sir. You got it.
Great. No more questions. Mr. Baxley, thank you so much for coming here personally and, and being grilled by us, and you do a wonderful job as usual, and we are very proud to have you leading Beaufort Memorial Hospital. You do a phenomenal job, so please stick around, don't go anyplace else. We want you to stay here as long as you, you, you feel like you can, so thank you so much.
I'll tell my wife you said that. She, she agrees.
Good. Thank you, guys. All right, let's move on then, and try to get through these things that we have remaining. And again, I appreciate everyone's patience. We like to give everyone a chance to give whatever time they, they need. So let's move on then to, let me see, number nine on our agenda, preliminary general fund budget status. And Mr. Williams? You're limping, you're limping.
I'm gonna go through this very quickly. I, I need to set a five-minute timer. If you wanna go ahead and roll that, that'll be fine. But I, I do wanna kind of let y'all know where we are. So on February twenty-eighth, everybody got their budgets in. We have been sifting and going through the budgets, piece by piece, payroll, expenses, looking at year-over-year and trends, looking at details of them. I, I would say it's probably one of the most detailed reviews that we've done, and I would say, ever. Whitney showed her true colors. She, she wants to come back to finance. She has been a big help. She, she said she doesn't like being Deputy County Administrator anymore, and she wants to come back. That's fine. Probably not with Eric, but anyways. But she, she's been, she and Denise have been, and I've, I've been working on it. It's been a good process. We're, we're about done with the general fund. The big thing that we need is the reassessments, which we got on Friday, so we can calculate the rollback millage and the value of a mill. As you know, in a quadrennial, or y'all may or may not know, in a quadrennial reassessment, you have to do what's called rollback millage, which is, there's a formula, and basically, you recalculate, it, it's so a, a county or municipality doesn't have a windfall because of change success values. And then you go off that, and, and your mill value changes, which it'll be higher than what it was last year, and technically, it should be about the same. We're, we're gonna be working on that over the next week or two and getting that done. The other thing I want to cover is, we are having, in conjunction with the South Carolina Department of Revenue, millage setting and rollback millage seminar hosted by Sandy Howe at the South Carolina Department of Revenue, and that's on April twenty-seventh at ten thirty, and some councilmen are attending, and look forward to seeing y'all there. But I, I've, I've put in there, put it where the general fund budget is right now, and it's gonna change, and we know it's gonna change. Right now, we have about a million dollar loss, but we, we gotta shore up some more expenses, we gotta shore up some more revenues, we're getting there. But there's a handout in there, and it's about, about a three or four pager that y'all might wanna look through. The first page just hasn't condensed as like total categories. I didn't really think that y'all wanted to dive that far down into revenues at all. Would be kind of mind-numbing. But what I thought y'all might wanna dive down into is, on the next two pages, would be the expenditures by department versus what the pre-budget was last year, and the preliminary recommended budget, and then we have an increase and decrease column, so you can kind of see where they are. There again, these aren't the final numbers, they, they may change as time goes on. But that, that's our first shot at it. And then the very last page, we have the, but, we have expenses by function, personnel services, purchase services, supplies, capital outlay, subsidies, others, contingencies, other expenditures and transfers, and kind of where they were last year, where they are this year, percentage of a total, just so y'all can see these numbers. So I, I feel pretty good about the budget right now. I think Denise has been pretty well absolutely amazing, and the, the finance, Deputy Finance, County Administrator of Finance, or whatever her title is now, she's been amazing too. The county's a geek out and have fun with numbers, and we've had a, we, we're enjoying it. But we, we should be ready to present in May, and hope, or May, yeah, in May, on May eighth, and then we're hoping to have the final, we're hoping to have the final reading of the ordinance, June twelfth, is what we're shooting for.
All right, so if we have questions, are we better off asking them today, sending you information through email, or waiting for May eighth to, to go through them? What would you prefer?
We, we haven't discussed it with the administration yet. We, we'll probably be sending more detailed stuff out to y'all before, so y'all aren't just, so the tsunami's not gonna come and just wash over y'all on the eighth. All four rings of paper that we're gonna print out for the budget. But we can do it digitally. We'll have a digital PDF, but if, if you, some people like the old paper to flip through, and we wanna have a requested column and a recommended column. Problem with the requested column is some of the requests didn't come in until after we rolled to the next level, and we can't put the numbers back in. So a lot of them are, are swags, you know, kind of wild guesses about where they would be, not wild guesses, semi-educated wild guesses. They kind of see where they would be based on prior years, and, and that's kind of where we are there. But we'll be sending something out between now and the eighth. Y'all will have something.
Any questions for Mr. Williams that we have there? Not, okay. Good. Let's, let's move on then, and Hayes, you stay up here, right?
Quick question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Now, I wanna get, I'm understanding now, if, to, to insert something into the budget or consideration, should it come, should I send it to you, or send it to you, or send it to who?
County Administrator.
Okay. Thank you.
And it, it, it will definitely filter down to me, so.
Got you. Okay. I'll copy you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, Hayes, let's, let's run on to the next agenda item?
Next one. I, I touched on this a little bit on, in, during my first speech up here. We, we have three bonds that are callable. We have one, the two thousand thirteen A, that is callable in May. We have sufficient fund balance, and we're recommending to go ahead and refund it, or redeem it, which we can do. The others, we don't get as big economic benefit unless we do multiples together. But anyways, to speak more about it, Jeremy Cook came from Charleston today. He is our new bond counsel, and he wanna kind of come up and put a name to a face and kind of go through everything with you. So I know y'all are tired of me talking, because y'all have heard me enough today, and I will sit down.
Mr. Cook, thank you for coming, and again, your firm, and let's just a little bit about yourself real quick.
Absolutely. It's great to be with y'all today. Excuse me. I'm in my twenty-fifth year of practicing bond law in South Carolina. Excuse me. We practice exclusively in South Carolina. My firm was the first bond firm in the state, started about a hundred years ago by UG Sinclair in Charleston to compete with New York City firms. At that point, all bond issues, including, you know, fifty thousand dollar borrowing by Beaufort County, was done by New York City Firm in nineteen twenty, if you look it up, for example. So my firm is a statewide firm, I'm co-leader of our department. We represent many of the largest counties in the state, from Greenville County, Florence County, Sparkmore County, Berkeley County, many of the largest cities in the state, Charleston, North Charleston, Somerville, Mount Pleasant, so we have a pretty wide spectrum. But we really view this as a relationship. Some of the counties that I work with today, I began working with on the, the day I began practicing law twenty-five years ago, and I'm still working with those counties, and in some cases, the same people in those counties. So we really view it as a relationship, so I wanted to be here today, so y'all could see me. You know, this is a relatively straightforward matter, but y'all are gonna have a lot of financing matters before you in the years ahead. So we really wanted to be a relationship, to ask questions there, and provide information, and I'm just thrilled to be here. I've done a little work with the county over the years. I advised the county a few years ago, there were some issues on the New River Tiff that the county had some concerns about, and I was brought in to answer some questions a few years back. And we've also do financings for large, larger nonprofits. So we did the financing for the Beaufort YMCA a few years, quite a few years ago, period before y'all, before that, we had to do a public hearing. But again, thrilled to be here, just, just a little while up the road, coming down from Charleston, particularly the right time of day, so I appreciate y'all having a three o'clock meeting, makes it much easier to get here, to leave Charleston at a, at one o'clock than four o'clock. But anyways, thrilled, y'all have a great team in-house, you know, your financial advisory firm is first try on, we do a lot out of Charlotte. The majority, we do the majority of our work with them, with cities and counties, so we're very accustomed to working with them, and, and y'all have a great staff, legal, financial, and administrative, so we're really excited to be part of, part of the team. So thank you for that opportunity. In terms of what's before y'all today, and it was just referenced, you know, you have three bond issues that are callable. Typically, when you sell publicly sold bond issues, so those are bond, you know, they're rated, like y'all are very highly rated by both Moody's and S and P, double A one and double A plus, so it's one notch from the highest, triple A is the highest. So very, very highly rated. Typically, when you sell publicly sold debt, so that's bought by retirement funds, individuals around the country can buy it in five thousand dollar increments through Wells Fargo, or through Stiefel, or through Bank of America. Typically, there's ten years that you can't refund or refinance bonds. That's just a market, market norm, and if you try to do less than that, you'll pay a premium. So you now have three series that have arrived at that, so they were twenty thirteen bonds, so now we're ten years later, twenty twenty-three, and even though they don't mature until twenty twenty-six and twenty thirty-three, you have the opportunity now to pay them off, not do anything, except keep paying them, pay them off or, or refinance them. So we worked with Hayes and, and the finance team particularly, but also the administrative team to, to look at that. So what's been recommended by the financial advisory firm is to look at paying off the A-bonds, which is about four point two million dollars from, from cash balance. That can be done on May first or after, at par, so you don't pay a penalty for paying it off early, you just pay off whatever the accrued interest of the day you pay off. The average coupon there is about three and a half percent, and so that yields, I believe, about eight hundred thousand of savings by paying that off. There's a, there's another series of bonds issued in thirteen, they mature in twenty twenty-six, so it's a shorter maturity, so nothing's being recommended at this point for that one. And then there's another longer maturity, goes out to thirty-three, that is a candidate for refinancing, but part of what the financial advisory firm will do is say, how much you have to pay Moody's for a new rating, how much you have to pay S and P, how much you have to pay me, how much you have to pay the financial advisory firm, and then look at what are the savings, just like on a refinance of a mortgage. Is it worth doing the refinancing on a mortgage on your house to save seventy-five dollars a month? You might say, well, no, I wouldn't do it for seventy-five dollars, but if I could save three hundred dollars a month, I wanna refinance my house. It's a similar analysis. So at this point, the recommendation from, from the financial advisory firm is not to do a refinancing. You don't lose the ability to refinance later. Once that window opens, it stays open for the next ten years. So the ideal time to do it would be if you were looking at a new money borrowing, so you're already incurring all those costs of, of ratings and those things, and then tack that on, because there's very little incremental cost to doing a refinancing and a new borrowing at the same time. So with the, with the needs coming forth for the county, the recommendation was to wait on that refinancing until there's a new money borrowing, just from a cost perspective. So the, the ordinance before y'all today is just to pay off the two thousand thirteen A-bonds, once the ordinance passes, and we can give thirty days' notice. So it'd be somewhere around July the first that that payoff could happen. payoff could happen. So, sorry, maybe that was too much or not enough. I don't know what y'all were hoping for, but hopefully.
In the amount of, what, four-point-five or seven-point-five?
It's, the balance is four-point-one-nine.
Okay.
There, those bonds have a, a current balance of like four-point-five, but there's about four-hundred thousand or three-hundred thousand that pays off on May first. That wouldn't be part of the payoff, because that payment would have already been made. It makes the outstanding smaller. And, and then you, you had a bond that matured just a few, few, you six weeks ago, and y'all have fairly compressed debt. So, most of your bonds mature between now and like the mid twenty-thirties. You don't have long-term debt in terms of, there's nothing going out thirty years from now. So, so you'll be able to have the same discussion. There are two other series, for example, that are callable March first of, you know, eleven months from now, so you can have the same discussion again.
So, with today's interest at six percent, these are at three to four percent, so it's still advised to, to.
Yeah, yeah. The tax exempt market isn't that high. So, I mean, we, we sold fifty-million-dollar worth of bonds for town of Mount Pleasant for referendum projects. And we closed March first, and their interest rate was slightly under three percent. It was for fifteen years. So, so the tax exempt market's obviously below the, the other market, but to your point, rates have certainly moved up and tax exempt like they have in every, every other factor. But, but I think the recommendation was, when you factor in kind of the strength of, when you go back to Moody's and S and P, and, you know, they run their various ratios, that this is a positive sign, you know, to, to them, if you have the cash to do it.
All right. So, this is an ordinance that will have to go before county council within three votes. Is there any other questions for Mr. Cook at this time? All right, good. So, look for a motion then to move this to county council. Mr. Passman, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Glover, thank you. Any more discussion? Seeing no discussion. Is there any objection to this moving to county council? Seeing no objection, this has passed and has moved to county council. Mr. Cook, thank you for coming. We appreciate you being here in person and taking the time out of your day today. All right. Then, let's move on. And number eleven, recommend approval resolution to purchase an ambulance from Beaufort County Emergency Medical Service Budget Surplus, three-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand dollars. And, yes, sir, if you can just comment and go ahead. I was just, okay, let's, let's approve this, but let's go ahead and have you.
You can do that. John Robinson, Public Safety ACA. I just want to tell you, this is a, we're, we're going to be able to purchase this ambulance that should arrive in the middle of June, which is really good for us. We'll make this purchase with fund balance from our Personnel Services, by and out of, from unfilled positions. Because if we buy this now, we will remove that from our twenty-twenty-four CIP. So, there's a lot of great things for us doing this now. So, this is a custom ambulance that was ordered by another organization that, for whatever reason, thirteen months later, decided to back out of the deal. So, it's a great opportunity for us. Right now, an emergency vehicle like this is anywhere from twenty-four, eighteen to twenty-four, and some vehicles, thirty months to purchase. So, outstanding opportunity for Beaufort County.
And Mr. Robinson, I'll make sure that I acknowledge you, because obviously, it's one of your first times being able to come, come forward for us. And Mr. Robinson is our new Public Safety Assistant County Administrator. So, again, thank you for joining us. We appreciate you being here. Heard great things about, about you so far. So, again, I think this is a great thing. So, any questions on the ambulance purchase?
Just one. Is it, is it in the budget?
We, this, this was going to be in the twenty-twenty-four CIP. So, because if we purchase it now, we remove that from the twenty-twenty-four CIP, so we save some money.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, move.
I'll second.
Good. Thank you. Any, any discussion? Seeing no discussion. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, this has passed, and this will go to council because of the, this, because of the amount of money, correct? Okay. All right. Good. And then, move on here. Number twelve, recommend approval appointment of Mr. McKellen, Mr. Dawson, Mr. Glover, Ms. Howard, and Ms. Tabardick to the Low Country Council of Governments as the county council appointees.
I would like to make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Well, I'll second it. My name's on it.
Oh, well, you better second. Any, any discussion? Any discussions? No discussion? All right. Well, any objection to this moving forward? No objection. This has passed. Let's go then on to number thirteen, approval of appointments to Warren Parker and Ed Saxon to the Military Enhancement Committee as Beaufort County's representatives for a three-year term with the expiration date of July twenty twenty-six. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Appreciate that. And any discussion?
This, this is a reappointment, right?
This, these are reappointments.
Reappointments, right.
Yes. So, they are reappointments. And the reason we're handily separate is they are not part of our committees, which will be our next item on our agenda. So, again, that, we had a first and a second. No, any discussion? Seeing no discussion. Any objection? Seeing no objection. That passes again unanimously. And then finally, our agencies, appointments. And we've got Beaufort County Transportation Committee recommend approval of Charles Perry to the Beaufort County Transportation Committee for a four-year term. For the Planning Commission, we have recommendation approval of appointment of Jonathan Henny to the Planning Commission for a three-year term. And then, the Disabilities and Special Needs Board, we have recommendation of approval of Leah Serfannic McFadden to Disabilities and Special Needs Board. And then, the Airports Board, we have recommendation of approval for David Nellums to the Airport, Airport Board. And I'd like to take all those at the same time. Do you have a motion for that?
I will make the motion to approve those.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And any discussion? Seeing no discussion. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection. We have, has approved. Anything else to come before this committee? If not, again, I appreciate everyone's patience sticking around. As usual, this time of year, finance committees get very long, so thank you very much. Our meeting is adjourned.